Good morning. I'd like to call the special meeting to order, please. And at this time, we're glad to see our board clerk back. And I'll ask you to call the row.
Carol Brown. Maxine Drew.
Here.
Jamie Humphries. Erica Jones.
Present.
Juan Rodriguez Page.
Present.
W. Lynn.
Here.
Stacy Aker.
Present.
Stand for the pledge, please. Can't even get up myself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, ask for approval of the regular agenda. Motion been made?
Second.
And second. Approval of the agenda. All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Excuse me. And I just pulled up the wrong agenda. So hold on, bear with me. I put up the wrong agenda I just pulled up the other day. How'd that happen? Lost connection there. What's today?
Twenty-fourth.
Okay. For some reason, I hit the twenty-seventh.
Yours is Monday.
Just came up. Okay, sorry about that. We lost the meeting here. Communications. I was not able to attend, but I heard some people went to a meeting, so if the board have any communication. Any board member have any communications they wish to share at this time?
No.
Okay. Then we'll go on to the discussion regarding the community meetings. We talked about having, in the last meeting, bring up the community meetings. Questions need to be addressed to purpose. Outcomes desire. Excuse me. Who will facilitate these meetings? And how will the marketing be done? And if any other questions you want to put on that we can address at this time?
Madam President, probably in the discussion, if something else comes out, then we address it.
We'll just take it as thin, okay?
If you'd like for me to go first, I thought it was important for us. I would say the purpose, one purpose, not the only, but one purpose could be just a listening tour of the community appearance. Outcome desired, that we would be more in tune with items, situations, concerns that community parents have now. Who would facilitate? If it's a listening tour, you wouldn't have too much of a need for a formal facilitator unless great one to, or that we were open to. We were listening. You know, we're getting information, and that's, I think would be us. And then marketing, newspaper, that these are the four dates to be established, the location is open, it's not relegated to any district. And the marketing and the newspaper, school group, and that connections that goes out. Those are just my ideas of those four points.
You said it wouldn't be in any other. Did I misunderstanding? You said as far as location.
It would be around the city.
Various.
To get all the.
Community.
Allow parents to go to someplace near, but you wouldn't restrict.
Okay.
That this is not just for this school body, not for that, but that it is open, so that the.
Community.
The venue would have to be large enough to address whoever attends. But they would have to be a member and a parent in USD 500 districts. It is not designed to have someone from Zuri, or Piper, or Bonner. These are, and this should be made clear at the opening, that we are wanting to hear from the community, the parents of USD 500.
And that would be in the public.
Correct.
Publication. So, and just my thinking right now, for complacent, we're probably doing one of the high schools in the different parts of the city.
Well, you've got four or five, or many.
Yeah.
It's not centered for a high school.
No, I'm just saying.
But you have.
Because it's located around the city, I could see having where the auditoriums would hold, or got too much of the gems.
Well, if you have a day, that could interfere with school activities, so the day could be at Central Office here. That's a pretty big venue down there.
Oh, downstairs. That's true, too.
The public library may also be an option, of course, to utilize. And my thoughts on the facilitation aspect of it, I would encourage maybe a PTA person or someone of neutral bias to maybe facilitate those meetings.
Neutral bias?
Well, yeah, right, but I'm seeing.
Neutral.
But I think maybe PTA seeing their involvement, because one line of focal point for schools is our PTA, and sometimes when we get that parent involvement beyond the meetings, they still have to have an outlet for what to do next, what are the next steps, what are some next things. So I really like to see PTA involved in our efforts that we maybe could get, really, I love the PTA, and I just think it's a utilized resource that maybe we could take advantage of. Social media, my suggestion is along with the meetings, that we offer an option for a live YouTube streaming. And the purpose of that is we have many working people in our community who are not physically able to come to a meeting. But the social platform similar to YouTube will allow them to attend the meeting, and who's ever in charge of that YouTube livestream, they will be able to post their questions to us, and we will be able to answer live time. This is some technology tool that's really comfortable with our generation of millennials because they are in that environment. I understand that some people do not have access to computers, but the beautiful thing about our young people is they know how to find access, and many of them have laptops. So they can utilize that resource to be able to tap into our meeting if they're not able to physically attend. As far as marketing, I again agree with the social media platform, in which we do have Facebook page, we have Twitter, we have those outlets, we have the libraries as a resource. So any groups that we support, we encourage them to also push out the efforts, not just in one area, but multiple support needs to go toward this to be effective. Because my fear is that if it's just posted in limited resources like we currently have, people will say, "I didn't know about it, I didn't see it." And my go-to is the hashtag, #SchoolBoard, like you were saying, #500 Listening Tour. It's on, and it's hot, it's popping, it's lit, you know? We want our kids to say, "Yeah, come, come, parent," or tune in online, because hashtag Listening Tour is lit, you know? Let it start in that thing. But create the hashtags so our parents can even see where we are and what we're doing and follow us. That's my thoughts on that.
Okay.
Yeah, in terms of purpose, I don't have a problem with the listening tour, but I think we need to include that we're in search for a superintendent, so why don't we got him there, so we don't have to double up and do it again. But, you know, there's some other ways we can do it, but at least give them a voice. What do you want, what are you looking for? And do that, and allow them the opportunity. And we want the kids there as well, not only the parents. We need to hear from the kids, hear from everybody. How can we make it better? And that's the purpose, to make it better. And since we have them there, let's find out, then what do you want in a superintendent? I think that's critical, and we need to make sure that we do that. In terms of facilitating, I don't have a problem with the PTA, but we need to make sure we have someone who's competent, who can handle that, and knows how to work a crowd.
What about David Smith?
I was going to say David, our communication.
Yeah, David Smith, no. No, rather than somebody else. I was trying to tell us.
I volunteer to you.
I can do it if you guys want me to. That's fine. But, and maybe we partner up with the PTA and sort of.
Yeah.
At each area, and have the PTA person there, and I just would run, truly facilitate, you know, in terms of, thank everybody for being here, this is what we're trying to do, give the PTA a chance to talk, talk about what's going on in that community area, and then kind of go from there.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I got the calendars out.
I'm saying March. We can get it all done in March.
Start in March.
I would encourage a weekend, at least one weekend day.
I'd say two.
You say what?
W E S spring break in March, too.
Right.
The board staff.
You said, you said, I didn't hear what you said.
Two Saturdays, one day.
Oh, two, okay, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry. You said starting in March.
One day.
And also, if David needs help with social media, do it something live, chat, or if you work with him, or the technology person.
Melissa.
Is there, okay, because I'm comfortable with that platform, so if you need help in that area, I'll be happy to assist. Okay.
That's what she said.
She says she has a team. Yeah, but I was.
Spring break is March the 12th, that we can march to 12. So we probably wouldn't want to get in there because.
It's the Saturday, Saturday, not the 12th, that's a Monday.
That's the Monday, right.
One of those days, you guys have the board.
Yeah, seventeen.
Seventeen.
So you've got, for Saturday, you have the 10th, the 24th, and the 31st.
What'd you say about the 17?
You guys have a board meeting already on Saturday, the 17th.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the wrong calendar then.
Yeah.
Oh, board interviews.
So the first available would be the 10th.
I'm comfortable with the 10th.
Please do it at 1:00. I can do it, but I got something else.
At 1:00, are you?
Yeah.
Which location do you want to use for the first one?
Or maybe you want to check facility availability.
So are you, like, want to spread it around, like, maybe the one here, and maybe one in the library, and then two in schools, or you want a community building instead of both schools, or?
I'm lucky it has that party.
Oh, the magnet.
Or the south.
Or the west.
Or the south.
South Ranch has plenty of parking.
It has that nice room there.
Yeah, if they don't already have it hooked up.
Yeah, who might be able to look around. Saturday might be hard there, I don't have that, I love Saturday stuff.
What you say? One year.
Yeah.
What's your location?
I'm sorry?
You give me that.
Yes, anywhere by dates is for location.
What date?
That marks the date, one o'clock.
At the, at the South Ranch.
South Ranch Library.
If it's available.
Yeah, they've got good location there.
Yeah, that is a good location.
Is that one?
They've got a good location.
Oh, I won't be able to be there. I can't, I can't be, I have the KSAB board meeting on the 10th, I knew it was something.
Remember, you can find the all board members.
I'm finna say, y'all can have it without me.
At all the meetings?
It's just as many as you can.
Shows your commitment.
Right, but if you have other.
What I'm saying, you can have it without me, I'm not, you got a vice president sitting over there. She can run the meet.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
So that's a one Saturday.
I'm just saying.
Okay, so 3:10 at 1:00 at the South Library, if available.
If it's available.
What's the time again?
1:00 p.m.
1:00.
Put in your new timeline.
Oh, I guess we'll get, like a shutdown.
1:00 to 3:00, two hours.
Final list. So you've gone, you've gone south. Which direction you going now? Only thing left is north and west.
About Winda or something.
How's, how's the parking at each of those? Some there has a small parking.
Winda.
Winda?
Yeah, Winda.
Which, which?
Well, that's got better parking.
Saturday day or evening? And we have to have a date.
Can we do it anything?
And Winda?
Yeah.
And that date would be what?
Can we do it the 19th?
Nineteen is good.
I'm just throwing it out.
That's a Monday night.
That's the day before our regular meeting.
The day before what?
That's before our board meeting.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
What time, 6:00 or 7:00?
I have the chat. I don't know the basketball schedules.
I'm gonna say we make sure.
You're hot and heavy at the basketball, so we're.
They should be through by then.
I think it'd be done by March.
They'll be through.
But make sure there's not a conflict at the school, they're doing something.
Right, yeah, I mean, students got to check on the building.
Can we give them two dates, so if we can't do the 19th? They already have the other day.
How about the 22nd?
The other 22nd. That's the Thursday.
I won't be there, but, so I don't hear it to me.
Let's try, what time did you get, what, earlier?
If the 19th's not available, try the 22nd then.
Okay.
You're Winda person.
6:00 p.m.
Winda, you're Winda person.
Yeah, yeah, I want to be there, but I gotta come.
Is another date earlier? Was it Thursday before?
That's spring break.
Spring break.
Spring break.
Yeah.
But maybe the 19th.
That may be, that may be okay, I mean, you've got, they'll have students, and that's not a conflict with the school.
But there are, some parents are out of town.
And we're going to give them all the dates anyway, so if they're out of town, they come some, another.
Right. Well, I think it's just messed up the way the spring break.
That seems like a good time.
Yeah.
Because there's no commitment, I mean, you don't have school, you don't have, it's a Thursday, spring break.
Right, but I personally.
But you're out of town, too.
Some, I'm gonna say something, which may go out of town.
So the 19th must be someplace.
Well, we're not going to get everybody, because we can't.
Right.
We seem to struggle, so whoever you can get, let's get, and if the response is good, then maybe we need to do it again. There's a need.
The 19th.
Yeah.
Because you can do that, right?
Yeah.
And you said 6:00?
The 15th.
6:00 to 8:00.
6:00 to 8:00.
And then we need a daytime.
Now we need a day and another Saturday. The only other Saturday is available the 31st. Location.
Oh.
You're not there, okay.
No, I was gonna say, oh.
Location, you have an idea?
Will the West Library be, or Washington?
There are.
Oh, sure. Washington, Texas. Oh, at the, the West Ridge?
Yeah, they're doing some remodel, that affects.
That's not big, I would think if you draw a crowd, that's not big enough.
The West Ranch has got a big enough space.
Washington, they have a lot of parent information, you know, we've gotten from parents that.
The 31st?
Yeah.
At 1:00 again, or, how's that work for you guys?
Yeah, that's good. Slago, what about Slago? Is that bad?
No, Washington is easier.
Oh, I thought you said Washington.
No, they said no Washington.
Oh, well, gotcha.
But we give them Slago, the revenue's better than Washington.
No, I don't care, I didn't hear.
She thought you said, she didn't hear what you said.
Oh.
One to three.
One to three.
And you've got one day left.
The day one.
So you've got a south, you've got a far west, and you've got a Winda.
Something in the middle.
Right here at the district, come here at the district, have it here at the district.
The northeast corner?
No.
How's Central Office?
Central Office.
It's, we can make that work.
Yeah, Central Office.
Sign.
Is this the one you wanted?
What date are you setting? And diamond date?
First week of April. During, sometime during the first week of April.
Okay. Mondays are just our time to be, during the day, but you don't have to be there.
So we've got March 10.
This is during the day of the evening.
This one during the day, I think.
March 19, and March 31st.
What about the 3rd?
And Madison City, April.
The 3rd.
10th, the 19th, 31st.
10th, 19th, 31st, in March, and then April, 3 would be the weekend.
Tuesday.
April 3rd, is that what we're saying?
At the Central Office.
Do we do it by morning time, since we're having it by the 10, or do you want to stay in the afternoon on that?
You get turned on, it's good.
How's it been, 30, time ago, when y'all met last time? How was the turnout?
You mean at the school?
No, I was just wondering.
Oh, at the school?
Right, how, was it a turnout?
No, we, no, I mean, it's just.
I was just wondering. There's some type of community club, I just wonder how many.
The community, but you got it. People work in this.
To school.
Because they have the beginning, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to join anybody about 2:00?
But you're not taking any.
We're not taking one.
People that work.
I think maybe in the evening might be better, to, you'll get a greater number of parents.
Well, we, we had recommended evening, Saturday, and then one daytime.
Okay, well, we'll get to evening on March 19.
So we were trying to.
Because you got to accommodate the people who could come during the day, but maybe they can't do it during the weekend, they can't.
Yeah, one day.
Yeah.
So 10 to 12.
And then Susan, you'll check on the facilities, if one of the facilities doesn't work, or maybe propose an alternate location, probably best thing to do.
So we've got March 10 from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. with South Ranch, and March 19 at Winda from 6:00 to 8:00, and Washington the 31st from 1:00 to 3:00, and then April 3, the Central Office from 2:00 to 4:00.
The only thing that we don't have is northeast corner location. You got Winda. Is that where there's northeast?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything?
Mm-hmm.
Right. I'll check on all this tomorrow.
That's, they have to go, those in the northeast have to go to Winda. I mean, I'd have to, but I mean, but, it's still, if they want to come, they're going to come, because once they all publish, they can choose which one they're going to.
And then if they're 10:00 online.
Right.
The same, they're working at 10:00.
So what, what you're saying, YouTube and live streaming?
Yeah, and it's just real time, and they can ask questions, and talk on there, just like their presence is.
Are we going to ask people to take a survey about what they want in the superintendent?
I think, my advice, my advice on that is wait until you select the person you're going to help, help you with the search, and then help you put the survey together.
This is more input for some what's, what is going on now.
My understanding is this, the idea here is you're trying to take the temperature of the district, the community, the parents, the kids, and see what issues are out there, that kind of thing, is that generally what we're trying to do?
Right.
Yeah. And obviously, the superintendent is part and parcel of that in selecting a new superintendent. But I think, once you select a search company, they're going to help you facilitate surveys, and they may, you know, if you, if you got them selected by the, whatever date it is, the second, or next meeting is, then they may help you with some ideas for the meeting too, in terms of getting into the conversation.
And Madam President, could our media person, and we draw up the publicity prior, and let us see it, prior to going out, to make sure the message is, is clear, and where it will be posted.
What you want on?
And how it's going to be, excuse me, available. We have to do it pretty quickly, because the first one's likely two weeks.
Okay, yeah.
She says she has tea.
Get that done.
So, by the end of the week.
By the, so at the board meeting, you can have something for us? Tuesday?
No, I seen Friday.
Friday, yes.
Send an email, and we respond.
Oh, you said the end of the week, next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tuesday, December.
All right, well, I was just, she was still shaking her head.
She probably do it by Tuesday, but there's no need to rush her to get it, to get it right, it's clear.
So if she has it by Friday, when we see it?
She'll email it to us.
She'll email.
Special board meeting first?
The what?
Special board meeting first?
First, the what?
I put it on the, on.
This one on the 26th.
Yeah. I hope it goes on the first, good.
Sometimes March and February gets tangled up because they have the same names.
Yeah, we got one on the 26th.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know, there's a couple, we got one.
And if you're going to put something in the weekly newspapers. I'd be in there by Tuesday, yeah. So what's the date of Friday? March what? Uh, 2nd. March 2nd. We can have it by March 2nd, then return time by March 5th, then you make the deadline for, at least for the Kansas City Call.
Yeah.
Tuesday noon. Most of the weekly ones are there, Tuesday noon. And that would then, because your March 10th is a squeeze date. Are there any particular papers in Argentine or Armadale that?
I reckon. Official publication.
John Mills.
Yeah. And then what about the Spanish newspaper?
Dos Mundo. Dos Mundo.
Yeah.
Hispanic news.
Dos Mundo.
Yeah.
The Vermees students have a paper, too, at the Long.
I'm sorry?
The Vermees and the Long students that have their.
I didn't know that.
Facebook page, and, and to for Kansas City.
And the Kansas City Call.
Right, so.
And it's social media, it's not, right?
Right, can you give us the list that, when you send the email?
Yeah.
And then, is there need to have interpreter?
If you're going to have people, it might be, that's.
Yeah, that makes sense.
A lot of kids that act, you're very helpful.
Yeah, Winda has a group of students who have interpreters for their, the parents and.
How often does your, the flyer go out? The connections that.
Yeah, I think we're going to get that. That's, yeah, that's seasonal, isn't it?
It's like quarterly.
Spring quarter.
So we've missed that. And when's the next?
Melissa.
Connection go out?
Oh, that won't be until the spring.
Yeah.
Whatever. Anything else?
And I'll request Vermees, that's why I need YouTube.
Think we got our bases covered?
Probably not.
No, we always miss something.
Probably put it on the calendar for Tuesday, for something we've missed.
If somebody thinks of something, just.
Put on the agenda.
We definitely should announce it on Tuesday, so we're being, I mean, that's like the first go around of dates and locations.
So Susan, if we'll, we'll announce it Tuesday, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If you think of anything else, come back Tuesday with additional input. All right, now we'll go to move on to board discussion, review responses, and I'll turn it over to our attorney.
We do. So just to kind of give everybody an update on what we did, we sent out a request for proposals for a, for search firms that assist school districts with superintendent searches. We sent it out to about 30 different search firms, as well as a variety of organizations that we thought maybe could assist in getting it out to other people that maybe we weren't thinking about. We ran advertisements in the newspapers. We ran advertisements in the newspapers locally as well. We received, I think, about six responses and one response from a company that said they were not going to be a school executive connect, declined to, to submit one, those were the responses we got. So they're all unopened, so I'm just gonna open them up and give everybody copies of the proposals and then we can go from there and see how you guys wanna go about doing it. And Susan will probably wanna make a, figure out a way to get Harold a copy as well. I've got, they were told to do a, whatever this is, so we got video copies.
He said whatever this is.
So the first one is from Grafton Staffing Companies.
What was the name?
Grafton, G-R-A-F-T-O-N, Staffing Companies. Susan, this was, they included this, they didn't give me extra copies of that, it's a way we can get copies for the board members of that. That should be part of the, that number. Yeah, I'm waiting for Susan to get back, so she gets on the record. Thank you, Susan. This is with the Grafton one. This is with the Grafton one.
This is with the Grafton.
The second proposal that we got was from Springsted Waters, just pass that out around to everybody. Susan, it's spelled S-P-R-I-N-G-S-T-E-D slash Waters. Yeah, there was a loose attachment that went with the Grafton. The next one is from a company called Hazard Young Atia Associates. And it looks like there's two little packets for this one. So make sure you get both copies.
This is it?
Yeah, I should have one there. The next one is from Ray and Associates. And the last response is from the Kansas Association of School Boards. So as I said, if anybody wants electronic copies of the proposals, we'll make sure you get them, we'll have Susan, we know that, we got them on there.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever, thumb drives, if they call.
Thumb drives.
Thumb drives. Show my lack of technology.
Right, we're actually posting in their Word Apps library, cause it may be two bits and.
Alright. And then we'll send a copy to Harold, so he's got a copy as well. So the original setup that we had discussed and indicated we were going to do was that this would be our opportunity to open the proposals we received, review them, and then select the search firms that we, that we want to come back for actual interviews. Uh, we had talked initially about three as, as the group number of people we wanted to come back for the interview, but you're not married to that number. If you have four packets or if you want all five to come interview, you certainly could do that. Or if you look at it and say, there's only two of these companies we're interested in, it doesn't have to be the three, that's just what we had put as a benchmark. And then from there, it's, it's really the board's discretion on how you wanna proceed with, with this next part of this. Obviously, you know, there's a lot of material here, so if you wanna take some time to kind of look through some things before we head, head any direction, I think that makes sense.
So the 17th is when we will interview these folks?
That's correct. Whichever ones you pick to bring back for the interview on that March 17th.
Okay, so will we be on timeline to review this and get back to you?
Well, you need to make a decision on which ones you want, but it's, it's up to you, I mean, we gotta make a decision before, obviously before the 17th. Uh, you got a couple of board meetings in between now and then, so you could.
No, we don't, we only have one.
Got one, so Tuesday.
Cause the 20th in March, because spring break, we only have one in March, and that's the 20th.
So we got one.
The only one we have is Tuesday.
So I guess Tuesday.
So by Tuesday?
We have one day between now and March 17th?
Yes. We have spring breaks in there and that throws to.
Oh, so we don't have a second day in March, okay, I got it. I got it, I got it.
So, um, I'll, I'll have my decision by Tuesday. I don't know if anyone else.
And, and remember, the, the purpose here is not to actually pick somebody, it's, you're deciding which ones you want to come back to.
Which companies you want.
Right.
So.
Out of the five.
You know, you got five applicants, so if you want all five to come back, bring all five back, it's not gonna hurt anything. It's just time. But if you look at them and say, eh, I'm not really, we're not really interested in this one, that's fine too. But you got some good information, and obviously, between now and the 17th, we'll wanna do some real good due diligence on these companies and, you know, whether you guys wanna individually do that, or you want me to contact other school districts, we've made it, put references in here. So if you want me to contact the other school districts that have used these companies and find out what their thought process was about them, I'm happy to do that. Or if you want a board member to do that, that's fine too. That's part of the process of trying to vet out and pick the right search firm.
Did you do that by Tuesday?
Yeah, I think so. Monday, I'll just call around if you guys want me to.
Okay.
I would like to see you call the companies that you have and see what others are saying about them.
Yeah. And like I said, I'd encourage you guys to do that too, don't, I mean, so for example, I know Ray and Associates, or Shawnee Mission, they do Shawnee Missions, I think. So I think it's worthwhile for some, the board members to contact some board members on Shawnee Missions School District and say, what's been your experience with Ray and Associates? I mean, you know, you don't want that filter from me, you wanna know from those board members what, what their experience was. If they were no good, you certainly don't wanna hire them. I know Lawrence has used one of these companies too, so that's, that's the thing, I, I think we could, maybe even spend a little time today, kind of sort through and figuring out how you guys wanna approach that part. Uh, it looks like KASB, for example, Emporia used them, so it would make sense for us to make some phone calls down to some of the board members for Emporia and say, what was that search process like? Were you pleased, were you not pleased?
I'd like, I'd like to, I, I would prefer contacting people myself and reaching out and giving the spirits firsthand.
Look at them, you know, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
And we make sure they put them all in there.
Yeah.
And the, the school board members themselves, obviously, there's gonna be public information as well. Now, we can help gather any information you want to assist you guys in that, if you want us to gather up the school board members and phone numbers for the, the districts that are used as references, we can do that, circulate that to the board.
Maybe not.
Yeah, I can do that.
I would also like to know what previous companies have this district used in this process of selecting a superintendent?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'll find out. So.
Do we know if we've already gotten people who have applied for this position or not?
No, we haven't published the position yet. So typically, once you have the search form, they're gonna help you pub, put the, to put together the, now, here, here's the thing, you guys, at the end of the day, you can decide, I don't wanna use the search form too, so I don't wanna say you're set in stone on this, right? But typically, one of the things they will do for you is they'll help you come up with the description that would be published out for the posting of the position. They'll help you identify, you know, things that are important to the district, things that are important to the board members, and make sure that information's conveyed as they're trying to advertise for candidates really. So that's part of what they, they do. So you wouldn't really post for the position until you've got somebody engaged, and then that person's gonna help you with that part of the process.
So we're gonna have to email you our comments prior to March 17th, or prior to the time we choose, correct? Or we just, how do we?
I, I think you could, well, you could do one of two things, you could email them to me if you want, and I could gather them up and have them ready for the board as a whole. Or, you know, part of the discussion during the meeting may be your discussion about what you heard from your phone calls. I mean, it's a public process, so it's important to know if we're selecting somebody that, you know, they got a bad reference from someone, I think everybody on the board wants to know that. Or if, if somebody got a really outstanding reference from some other school district, it's important for all the board members to know that too. So, um, it could either, be done either way, we could just do it as an open discussion, or we could do it by email and circulate.
Well, realistically, we, we would have not, we would not have contacted people by February 26th.
That's not realistic, yes.
And if March 17th is the day we choose one of these, then there's gotta be some timeline established between that time for us to communicate to each other, or to you, or whatever.
So I, I, I think, probably communicated to me and then I'll figure out a way to communicate it on.
By when?
So if we're saying the 17th, you're gonna say March 10th, I'm just throwing a date out.
Is that the first community meeting?
Mm-hmm, South Branch.
So when we see you on the, those could make the 10th, if they can't make it to the meeting, let you know by the 10th, and you can contact the folks. Like enough time?
Yeah, it is, in fact, we could even use the 10th if you wanted to, to have a brief discussion before the community meeting starts.
That makes sense.
To do the references. Does that make sense?
So is the 17th gonna be the day that you're gonna interview them, or is that the day you're?
That's, that's the day we're interviewing.
That's you're gonna interview us.
Because if you let wait much longer than that, you're not gonna have anybody engaged to be able to get this done timely. So you've got it, you gotta interview everybody on the 17th and then probably make a decision after the interview is done as to who you're gonna hire. That's really what you need to be. Any other information that would be helpful for the board for us to gather up and get to you? There should be cost information in here on these proposals. I've, I've, obviously, I haven't looked through them yet, but we'll take a look. I just opened up Graftons and some of the things to keep in mind as you're looking, you know, I think it's interesting where they, page four, Grafton gives you a timeline of what they think is realistic for the selection process. That's important. You know, and it, and that's a good place where you wanna ask questions of these people as they're doing the interview, is that realistic? We don't wanna shoehorn somebody in here that's not gonna be the candidate we really want. So if that's not a realistic timeline, then we'll make sure we push on those kinds of things. I think you wanna make sure you're getting a good pool of candidates for the position. And so, I mean, that's, that's part of what you wanna push when you're talking to these folks or, or interviewing them on the 17th.
So the possibility of an interim, um, if, if it's needed, or if we decide to go that route, when would that decision take place?
Sort of probably part and parcel of everything else, I mean.
Okay.
You know, you, you certainly can go an interim route, lots of school districts do that. The advantage to that is you're not rushed into picking somebody with a limited candidate pool, it takes, it makes the selection process longer for a permanent position. But you can make that decision at any point in time between now and June 30th. Obviously, if you're in June and you don't have somebody, you better get an interim, I mean, at that point. So realistically, if you don't, if you don't think the process is moving along well enough, that you're gonna have a candidate in place, you know, really in June, you need to be thinking about an interim, it's just not realistic to have somebody, you know, hired on the 30th of June and start July 1. It's just not for. So you do need to be thinking about that as a, as a, as a process. And that could be somebody internal, it could be somebody external. And that's again, something that's part of this discussion process as we start really getting going on the superintendent search. And you guys really need to spend some time on this because this is one of the most important things you guys will do.
I know we had used an interim in the past, I'm not familiar with the list of those, just from my knowledge, or I don't know if anyone else wants to know, but let's know who the previous interns were.
We can do that. And, and different districts handle that differently, some of them, there's a lot of retired superintendents that will come in and serve as interims if you want somebody outside. Uh, some school districts use somebody internal, you know. Some school districts use somebody internal, you know, assistant, that they have served in interim capacity for a period of time. And then, I know this district has in the past used retired administrators of this district to serve in interim capacity. I can't remember, Dr. Franklin, I think, did that. Did it twice back when, was that when Lusk was hired?
After he left.
After Lusk left. So that's been a while.
And then before...
And hence the...
Yeah, and after...
Before Ray was hired.
Yeah.
So, and he was a former assistant superintendent of the school district who had retired, and so he was brought back to run the district. And it's going to be kind of critical, I guess, maybe we should have a little bit of discussion about it, because you're going to have major budget issues going on. We don't know when the school finance thing is going to get sorted out. And so you don't want to be in a spot where you don't have leadership from the administrative standpoint heading into that final budget process and setting school up for the next year, because a lot of that work happens in June. So, you know, I think you do need to be thinking about that as part of it. But that's another good question to ask these research, or these companies when you're doing the interviews, is, you know, what do you think in terms of having an interim in place, and is that something that they recommend or not? I think they'll tell you they do, but, you know, that's kind of where that lands. Really what's important is having somebody in place who knows something about finance and knows something about, you know, the budgeting process, and something about the, just the mechanics of getting the school year up and running, because, you know, you're going to have all kinds of things that you're gearing up for, training and service, all that stuff, heading for the start of the school year. And you may or may not have somebody in place to be able to do that by that point in time. Shawnee Missions made their decision, so now they've got a guy that's going to be pursued. And so by the time June gets here, he's going to have a lot of input on what they're doing. So, I don't know if that answered your question?
Yeah.
Now, if you're going to go an interim route, probably you're going to need to be thinking about appointing an interim sometime in May, so that you've got somebody in place for June. Yeah. If you're going to hit that route. You don't want to go, you don't want to go past that point. Now, the only carve out is if you, for whatever reason, decided on your candidate at that point. I don't think that's realistic, but maybe it is. But if you've got a candidate at that point, and you're ready to make a decision, then you maybe wouldn't need the interim. But I just look at the timeline, the Grafton, I think that that's probably not realistic. You're probably looking at having a candidate sometime, probably in June or July would be Other questions, information, things people are interested in me trying to come up with?
Will we think of something we'll leave on?
Yeah, please, please do. I will call, the other school districts will circulate numbers for school board members for the others to all the board members, so you have that. And then anything else, if you guys see that, if there's something that pops up and says, hey, this would be helpful for me, let me know.
You're going to get that back Tuesday?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll have that back out, we'll get that out to you Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, it should be hard to get out to you guys.
So if our meeting on March 10th starts at 1:00, and we need to have a brief discussion, are you suggesting noon we show?
Well, you can't be there till 1:00, right? So what I would suggest is perhaps we could do 30 minutes after the community session's over, and just run real quick through what the references were. Won't take very long to do, I don't think. So we'd want to add that to the notice on that meeting, so we'll have the open forum from 1:00 to 3:00, and then...
This is...
This is... Take time to read through, and if you've got anything that flags, or you've got questions about, that I can help get more information on, let me know.
Good weekend reading.
And you'll get the numbers just by Monday?
Yeah, yeah. That won't be hard to do. And it's going to, I mean, you're going to get better information if you guys are calling other board members than I'm going to get from the district in general. I mean, it's just going to happen. There're going to be more...
I'd like to compare.
Yeah, 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 no, I know, I'm going to...
Just to, you know...
Yeah, I'm going to do it, I'm just saying.
Just see what you have, what we have, and then we can kind of compare and talk about it and see where we're going. So the more information we can get, the better it is.
I completely agree. I think that's absolutely right.
And what's the vehicle for that?
They're comparing the information on the temp, I think.
Yeah, on the temp.
Or overshare what we...
Yeah, that's what I was...
As we're setting that 30 minutes or whatever aside on the temp after the community meeting.
Community meeting.
To kind of go over that. It is, but...
Is it pretty normal to have about five or six stories? Is this pretty normal for...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's not a ton of companies that do this for school districts. A lot of them are in California or New York, back east, so they're not as excited about coming to Kansas City and doing the search for us. The bigger executive search firms, you know, they do a lot of hiring for, you know, companies like a Sprant or somebody like that. They're not really interested in the public sector very much. So you end up with companies that specialize in school districts, which is what you want. That's how they know qualifications and stuff.
And a lot of these mention for their cost or fee, a certain percentage of what, I believe it said of what we're paying the person in the position. So would that be reflected in the current, it would be reflected in the current salary? Or would, where would we discuss the salary?
Well, the salary, you guys get to decide what salary offers you're going to make and what that salary's going to look like, and, you know, some of that can depend. You've got an experienced, long-term superintendent right now.
Right.
You know, part of it, you can use it as a benchmark. I mean, you know what that salary is, and you can benchmark it and say, you know, we should expect to pay that. But I don't know what Shawnee Mission is paying their new suit, but we'll get you all the pricing and costing information. But that's a, that's a, that's a different discussion, but it is certainly something you guys need to be thinking about, is what that contract with that superintendent looks like. And we'll be very involved in helping you sort that through as you get to that point. You know, some of it may depend on what it costs to bring somebody in. If there's somebody you want, it's a negotiation, so, you know, different districts pay different amounts for superintendents.
Can you acquire that from the surrounding?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That was one of the controversies, I think, the trick about stockpiling his retirement to...
Uh-huh.
And he walked out with the $300,000?
There are several that have...
Where was this?
This was last...
Three years, no?
Within three years.
Yeah.
What is that, disadvantaged business enterprise?
Disadvantaged business enterprise is a business that's operated in an economic zone that is designated by the Fed as a disadvantaged business, yeah. Somebody that's agreed to, they run a business in, there's zones that are geographic.
I didn't see that.
What have we normally paid superintendent? What have we normally paid if we went back on the last three or four that we had?
Well, I mean...
Can we get that?
Yeah, 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 I'll get you the information. I'll show you what we've paid and what the, what the cost is.
Starting price.
Yeah. I'll get, I'll just get the year by year.
The range, year by year.
Now, when you, when you use those figures, do you include benefit package?
So I would. Sometimes you see contracts where they try to hide stuff in the benefit packages. I am not a fan of doing that at all. I think that's, I think that is almost a little deceptive, so I don't think we should do that in terms of coming up with those, those contracts. I think everything should be upfront out there.
So on top of the data that you, that you present to us that...
Yeah, it'd be, it's full compensation. Yeah. Yeah, you're going to have a little bit of apples and oranges when you're doing comparison, because, you know, say somebody's got a 457 account, which is a retirement account contribution, that may not compare well to somebody else who's got a 403B retirement account, which is a different type. So list them, but just understand that it's not dollar for dollar on those things.
No, I get that. I just wanted to know, what have we done in the past? What did we give, so we can kind of...
Right.
And what's the norm?
Right. Yeah. Well, I think Dr. Wood's question was a little bit different. She wanted to make sure we were including the benefits as part of the compensation.
Well, we add that, you know, that track, and here's the salary, here's your benefit.
You add up that benefit.
If they're paying into something.
Right.
I mean, just identify all the components.
Yeah, we'll get all that, we'll get all the compensation information for you and get surrounding district information and past practice here, and so you've got that. It's a little bit in weeds, it's been having to do with selecting a company, but we'll get all that information for you.
Okay.
It'll take us a little bit of time to gather that up, though.
And the company might provide something about you?
Well, the company will provide that, but...
Should that be, we can see if they provide, or is it you provide?
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes that's interesting, particularly if they get a percentage of the compensation as their fee, right?
Because when they say a percentage, what do they figure, the whole package?
I assume.
Or just the salary?
I assume it's the whole package. That's a great question to ask, the one in there, right? And on somebody like that, I think another great question to ask is, would you be willing to do it for a flat fee as opposed to a percentage? Because to me, if you've got somebody that's working with you to select a superintendent, and their compensation is tied to the salary the superintendent's getting, that seems like they have an incentive to tell you that the salary needs to be a lot higher than maybe it needs to be. But that's just my thought. And you can't go cheap on a superintendent. I mean, you need, you need to pay a comparable salary and pay somebody well, so you have a good, good superintendent in place that can run the district, but you also don't need, you know, you don't need them coming in telling you, we need to pay somebody $300,000 or something like that.
And that's a question to ask the board members, if they're willing to share that exchange that they had with these people. They may or may not.
Well, no, I think that's a question we're doing the interviews of these companies. I think one of, I think just out in the open, just to ask them and say, you've got a proposal in here, your fee proposal is to do as a percentage of the base salary. Would you agree or be willing to do it as a flat fee or a specific cost rather than a percentage? Now, you may spend more doing that, but at least you know the number's not going to be adjusted based upon what you're paying the superintendent.
I was saying, like, calling Shawnee Mission board member, would you end up paying Ray and Associates?
Yep. That's a great question to ask, yep.
And they may be willing to say that, and they may be a little reluctant.
Oh, no, they'll say, it's public, it's public record.
Well, for record, that, you can see the salary.
No, that's not the point. When you talk to a board member, they may or may not feel comfortable, and you can close your mind, yeah, well, I can find out if I got that conversation.
Right, it's public record.
Yeah, it's about salaries.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think that's good to do.
Making sure we might charge a higher percentage for what we will do.
Suffered more than every day.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Maxine, you got any questions?
I'm good.
Stacy? All right, you guys got some homework. I do, too. But, so Susan, you'll get these proposals posted in the board docs.
I'll get a copy to Mr. Franklin as well.
Yep. And then if, when you send that to him, if he's got any questions, just tell him to give me a call, I'm happy to fill it in. And I'll circulate to you guys on Monday, the phone numbers. They're all have Susan do it one way or the other. We'll get them out there, but...
I have all the contracts, past contracts.
Yeah. It'll take a while to get the past contracts and the salaries gathered, so...
Past search stuff that we've done in the past.
Yeah, be a little patient with us on that, because it'll take a little bit of time to gather up. But we'll get you the phone numbers and that part of it quickly, so you can be taking steps. All right.
Next, upcoming agenda, of course, we have Monday, I mean Tuesday, board meeting here at the central office.
Remember the art thing at four?
At 4:00, yeah, 4:00, the, back here. The new artwork that will be displayed, their families and the, and the young people will be there. So before the board meeting, if you can, please come, so we can let the young people see, and you can see their work.
Here's maybe the reception guy, and then the secretary.
Okay. Anything else? Entertaining motion?
And did you see that the groundbreaking on March 2nd are first groundbreaking for the...
Groundbreaking for Gloria Willis Middle School at 10:00, and then Stony Point North at 11:00, and Claude Height at 11:30.
And for anybody that's going to come, be able to come, we're going to have a bus here. We'll meet here and take the bus around, because parking and everything is kind of an issue with the schools. And it'll just be a short, we'll dig up some dirt in each one and get it right there, so if you can come and leave, it's fun. Y'all get a hard hat.
Get the backhoe out. Everybody just turn the backhoe.
So, oh, and Alan wanted me to remind you about the math relays, March 3rd at Wyandotte. Starts at 9:00 and then the...
What time, what date?
Uh, March 3rd. Starts at 9:00. And the relays start at 9:00, and then they'll have the elementary awards at noon and the secondary awards at 1:00.
Wait a minute. Help yourself.
When I passed out the Grafton sheet, I gave somebody the original copy. If you guys mind looking, because the original needs to stay with the school district, and I can trade you.
What does it say?
Well, these all say "copy" on the bottom. One of them's going to say "original." Did you say "copy," Susan?
Yep.
Copy? Grab the one that said "first one."
Oh, yours is...
Yeah, did you hear the original?